This Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. We're in the Nashville High North Boardroom and it is 6:02. Okay. You're not on the committee, okay? Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Mr. Mosher? Mr. Mosher? Mr. Mosher, did we lose you?
We heard his voice a minute ago.
Mr. Mosher?
I think that's him.
Mr. Mosher, are you there? Can you hear me?
Yes, I am and I hear you fine.
Okay, thank you. You're by yourself.
Yes, I am.
And you can hear me, okay? Thank you. Also here is Ms. Porter, Mr. Donovan, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Smith, and our Assistant Director of Technology, Mr. Rodriguez. And these two gentlemen are here for a presentation. If you could introduce yourselves, I'd appreciate it.
Mike Davey with EEI.
Okay.
Chris Clurity with Control Technologies.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, we have a quorum. The first item on our agenda is energy savings.
Mrs. Oden, as a point of order, if I may, I'm concerned that this information is not accurate and up to date. I found errors in the document. It speaks to oil. We don't have oil. We have natural gas.
Okay.
The calculations presented do not match what's in the finance document attached.
We'll deal with that as we go along. We'll hear some of it and we can deal with that as we go along, Mr. Kaufman.
I think the board should be able to receive information that's accurate for our consideration. And this, it can't be right because we lost our energy supplier. So, we know that that rate, that all the payback is calculated against, can't be right. So, I think we're wasting our time in committee to review this because so much of it has to change.
Okay.
And I think that committee's time would be better spent next month reviewing a more substantial and complete document.
Would anybody from administration like to address Mr. Kaufman's?
Sure. We were aware there are some inconsistencies. Actually, Mr. Donovan did the first review of the document and identified a few things that were off and brought it to Mr. Davey's attention. I just kind of was watching stuff go back and forth, but my understanding is you couldn't change the document before this meeting and you will, no doubt, correct those issues as we go through it.
So, the document presented here is a preliminary report, which is identified on the title. The, the, last time we met with this committee back in the, in the fall, oh, can you hear me?
Green button. Oh, he's got one on, yeah.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
If you get just a little closer to the microphone, I think that would help.
Can you hear me?
Is the green light on?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Turn that one on.
Try that one.
Is this better?
No.
I was fine before, so...
Okay.
So, this, this is, the process that we're undertaking is a, is a multi-tiered process. When we met with the, when we met here back in, in May, there was multiple options and multiple discussions about which buildings to proceed with and then how to finance the potential projects. So, we have two documents here before you today. The first is a preliminary report on what would be in the project. And the second is a leasing proposal dated November 7th, 2019, from municipal leasing consultants. What that, what I'd like to just call your attention to that quickly, what that is showing is that a $3,651,000 project as option two, or a $3,280,000 project could be financed over a 20-year period with guaranteed energy savings to offset that. Now, those were based on the current electric rates that we had over a three-year period. If, if the rates changed, then the savings would change. And so, we can, we can certainly update that. There was, there was a couple of big question marks that we wanted answered before this became a final report. And one of those is whether or not any solar items should be controlled, could, could be included. So, back at the May Board, we had been asked to kind of look at solar at either of these buildings and then, and then also at Dr. Crisp. We couldn't find a valuable location to locate solar at either high school. The Crisp School roof seems to meet the payback period, so we, we identified that as a potential option. And so, what we wanted to do is get a final confirmation of the scope and whether that solar should be included or not. And then this would become a final document with a lease, a lease amount that would match the project. So, from a big picture standpoint, the energy savings at North are estimated to be at $224,000. At South, they are at $231,000. And a solar system at Crisp would be about $14,000 in savings. So, our, our plan of attack was to present preliminary information, get feedback as to whether or not that solar piece should be removed or not, and then create a final document, which would come back.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Thank you. So, are these annual savings?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, your chart doesn't say that.
Yes.
Now, I do want to point out to the committee, and our visitors may not know this, but this committee just last month voted that we would not consider any solar project for the remainder of this term. So...
I told Mr. Davey that tonight, so he's aware of that. He was, he just presented.
So, having, having voted and we spent an inordinate two meetings and then previously, a couple of years ago, we spent more time on it. I've been on the committee that long. So, I would ask that the Dr. Crisp discussion be brought forward to the committee in January if this committee is actually going to follow what it said it was going to do. I think, and when you do make that presentation, I would recommend that you have a full description of the panels, the efficiencies, the, you know, the inverters, all the stuff. Because right now, this is a cursory thing. I don't want to discuss it, but it should be deferred. This part of the conversation should be deferred to January and not for the remainder of this calendar year.
And I agree that, that, that is meant to, that's shown as a standalone. So, if the committee wants to move the report forward and not include the solar, that, that would be what I would recommend.
But in actuality, it's not because it's rolled into the South number and that the financing is based on that. So, that's, the problem is that we have something in the financing proposal which shouldn't be here. So, that's just another level of confusion that has to get sorted out.
Just one thing about, keep in mind, this is a financing proposal. This is not a contract. If we were to decide to go with this, we would get the actual contract, review that in detail, and approve it. This is here so you can get a sense of if you chose this financing option, what it would potentially cost. There's, we couldn't turn around tomorrow and say, "We want this exact rate. Give it to us now." There's, this is just a proposal. And if you've ever done any financing, it's going to be a lot more than two pages. The document will probably be that thick.
So, this is not bonding, so what I'm, what I'm a little puzzled about is you have two different three X million dollar proposals. So, it's, they're not, they're, each of them, one is for the North and one is for the South. So, is that, that's how I understand this. So, we're looking at two transactions. So, you're looking at almost $7 million worth of expenditure. Is that right? We're talking about leases that, over a 20-year period?
Right.
Which would total over almost $700,000.
Yeah.
So, let me ask this question. It's a 20-year lease. This is, this is where things fall apart for me, okay? So, you have a 20-year lease, yet the payback is 14 years. So, we're paying interest over a six-year period into the future after our payback period has come and gone. So, the savings are actually somewhat reduced, given that longer period that we're paying for it, even though the payback period is 14. What would this look like if we paid for it and, you know, we, we, we got our benefits, we paid, it's a 14, it's even a 15-year term. And, you know, so we now have an extra five years of savings into the bank. Now, I don't know how the cash flow works. I'm sure that's really what drives the 20 years.
So, the, so just to answer your question, and this is, this is the reason that we present preliminary information, so that if the board wants to tweak something, we can change it and then, and so this is a very common discussion. The reason we're proposing 20 years, or we sought a 20-year proposal for municipal leasing, is to make it so that there is completely budget neutral over the entire term, meaning that there is no increase in any line item of the budget. Essentially, if this project was approved as proposed without the solar, it would include energy savings that would be $224,000 per year. And it would, you would reduce the energy line at North by $224,000. You would have a lease payment of a similar amount. At South, you would reduce your energy budget by $231,000. And there would be zero, let's say, tax impact for this project. The, the benefit of lumping the projects together is you're getting items like the lighting, which has about seven-year payback, 7.6-year paybacks, with things that are needed, such as the controls improvement. And so, that, that is kind of the benefit to lumping it and doing it over 20 years, is that it's completely budget neutral. You're getting new equipment and allowing the energy savings to pay for that. Quite rightly, you could finance this over 10 or 15 years. And then, the downside of that is it would not be completely budget neutral. It would have some budget impact, depending on whether you did five or 10. So, the, the first pass on this was to have a project which is budget neutral. And I will tell you, that's what, that's what many cities we, we work with do, is they go with, like, for example, the city of Manchester did a 20-year bond. It mixed things that had a good payback, like LED lighting, with things that were necessary, like controls upgrades and boiler replacements, hot water heater replacements. So, the proposal before this committee would, if the, if the committee decided to advance this forward, would become a final report, which would match the term that you desired.
If I could just add, okay? If the energy savings fell short somehow, we still have the payment. My recollection is you guys make up the difference.
That's right. That's right.
So, we can't lose any money in that scenario?
That's right.
Okay.
Can you report, when the time comes, let's say you stick with a 15-year, oh, sorry, with a 20-year proposal. And I understand why. I don't have a problem with that.
Yep.
But can you share with the committee at that time what the additional cost is for those five years over the savings?
So, I guess there's, if, if, what I think would be simpler is if you were to ask me to do the...
15 and 20?
To give you an option for a 15 and a 20. And, and a lot of times, it's, you know, when there's, when there's a building facility committee meeting, or a lot of times, they kind of vote to go ahead with the project, but vote that the board gets presented with an option for 15 or 20 and understands the budget impact and Dan and I could figure that out.
I mean, now, that would be helpful because are we going to, are we going to bond this? Is that the intent, Mr. Donovan? Or you're just going to pay for it out of the operating budget as a lease payment instead of a utility cost? Or, I don't know if you want to do that?
Well, we, this option would basically be covered by the savings, so it would happen in the operating budget. That's what this municipal leasing option. We did speak to the city about a bond, because we'd obviously have to get the bond approved through the city. And personally, they were just going through and cherry picking a couple of, let's say, the lighting, because it was such a short-term savings, so you weren't going to be getting all the other savings. And to be honest with you, I think with the middle school project moving forward, I'm not 100% sure what the appetite for any more bonds for the school would be. So, this would be, you know, before we finalize things, we could try again or speak with them. But my guess is, we just wanted to bring something else forward to say, "If we want to get these energy savings, here's another way to do it."
But is it risky to have a commitment like that based out of the cost side of the operating budget? I mean, you'll have increases built into the operating budget for energy costs, right? You'll go against the, whatever the current rates are. Would you factor that in? Or are you going to be flat for 20 years? This is the payment and we know it. And so, it makes your job a little bit tighter on the budget.
Again, it's budget neutral, though, so, you know, we just pay out of the savings. If the savings don't reach the point of the payment that we have to make, then EEI makes up the difference.
So, the, the operating budget would, the budget for utilities for North and South would be the amount of the payments for this lease for the next 20 years?
Yeah.
Is that a fair way of saying it?
Yes. What we do is reduce, let's, let's use 200, just for simplicity's sake, would reduce our utilities by 200,000. We'd have a new line for a lease payment for 200,000. And then, we'd be guaranteed those savings through the year. If we only got 180,000, then EEI would kick in the $20,000 difference. So, that's, I think, the reason for the 20-year to kind of match up with the savings on the sheet, which about equivalent.
And I appreciate the approach. Don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm in favor of the concept of what you're trying to do. I'm just concerned about borrowing because we're going to ask the city for $120 million for the schools to have on our books another 20-year lease, right? We don't, we lease equipment. It's three or five years, right? That's generally business.
Yeah, we don't lease a lot.
We don't lease anything this length.
We lease copiers. That's the only thing we lease now. It's a five-year lease.
Only we buy the computers. We don't lease any.
Yes.
Right.
So, just to, the, the, leasing isn't right for every scenario. The rates that you're getting here are sub 3%, which is, is very strong lease rates. And it has to do with the, the credit of the city and the, the value of the project with guaranteed savings that the leasing feels comfortable providing that. I will say that one of the other reasons cities do leasing, so we just did a project with the city of Summersworth, it doesn't, it's considered an operating expense, so it doesn't, it doesn't factor into your, your overall debt load for bonding consideration. So, leasing has been the most popular avenue for these types of projects in the state of New Hampshire.
If I could...
Sure.
So, the other, for me, the, the other elephant in Rome is deferred maintenance. These high schools are, it feels like we just finished them yesterday, but it's, let's do the math real quick, 2004, so that's 15 years. And there's a lot of upgrades to the equipment that wouldn't otherwise take place. So, this is, this is one way to stay ahead of the deferred maintenance piece a little bit and still get the equipment replaced and keep the plant running.
No, I think it's a great idea. I see the value in it. Don't get me wrong. I, I am just looking at, I'm just trying to understand the money and where the cash flow is going to come from. So, this discussion was helpful to me to, you know, and to understand that it doesn't impact the credit of the city, but we would have a flat payment for the next 20 years and if there is a delta in the cost. So, my next question is, what if these guys go out of business?
So, we won't, no. The, we've been, we've been in business since 1987. We've submitted, as part of our response, our financial, our financial report, which we're in strong financial health. The other thing is, oftentimes, you would know within the first year or two of reporting if there was a problem with the savings. So, for example, if, if, if we're predicting 200,000 and it came in at 100,000, you could start remedying that immediately. You wouldn't have to wait 17 years to realize there's a problem. Because usually, once, once the savings come in for several years, it stays pretty consistent. It's unusual to have 220,000 savings for 15 years and then all of a sudden have this big change. So, so that, that concern is typically addressed in those two ways. So, if there's a problem, it could be addressed right away and...
I'm sure as an engineer, your, your numbers are conservative. You're not, you're not in this to lose money.
No. So, to give you an example, at, at Plymouth High School, we had predicted savings of 128,000 and they've been having them come in at about 208,000 a year. So, we've, I think the error is most likely to be on the other side, that you're going to find more savings. And, and one of the things I'll point out is if you, if you read about the light fixtures and, and, and what we use for a runtime of 3,000 hours, based on our reporting, your light fixtures are on more than that. So, we put in sensors and found that the runtime hours are closer to 3,500 in a lot of areas. So, we err on the side of, of being conservative because we know there are certain things that are out of everyone's control, you know? So, we, we err on being conservative to make everybody look good as opposed to trying to overpromise.
Excuse me. I, I'd like to ask a question. You just mentioned that Plymouth is quite a bit, saving quite a bit more than you estimated. Have you had any schools that didn't match up to your estimate that it was below?
Schools, we had, we had a garage where we had, our fuel savings were not coming in anywhere close to what, it was a DPW garage in the city of Providence. And so, we went down to investigate and found that the building, which had been set up as just a nine-to-five building, had become a 24/7 building. And people were actually living in it, employees. And so, so we missed the savings and then we reported to the city and said technically we missed the savings, but, but there's a reason why. And, and the city waived the penalty because they changed the use. So, there's actually an adjustment factor. For example, if, if you started, if you started changing the use of your building, we would then update these numbers to, to show the change. For example, if, if you went to year-round schooling or something, you never know, then we would have a, we would have an adjustment, a baseline adjustment calculation for that. But no, we've never had to make a shortfall payment.
Thank you. Before I go to Mr. Kaufman again, Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
Oh, I am reviewing the, the, the lead lighting and the efficiencies. And as such, I am looking to see what they are talking about in their way of efficiencies affected between the fluorescent and the lead lighting.
Yep. So, so I can address that. So, if you turn to page, to page six, we talk about there being, in 2000, at Nashville North, for example, 2,953 two-by-four style fixtures. So, a two-by-four...
That's a T8 and a T5?
Yes, sir. That's a, that's a T8. And so, those fixtures currently operate at about 96 watts per fixture.
Uh-huh.
They would be replaced with a fixture that would have 28 watts per fixture. So, you'd go from 96 to 28. In addition to the, to the kilowatt-hour savings, those fixtures would have something called space-wise control and wireless dimming. So, what, what space-wise control means is each fixture would have a built-in motion and daylight sensing, so that if, if areas of, of space are unoccupied, they, they shut off, starting with an auto dim and then going to off. And so, there's an additional savings, not only from kilowatt-hour reduction, but that every, every one of those fixtures would have a built-in occupancy and daylight sensor. So, I'll...
Yeah, because I'm looking at my notes that I have, you know, from previous expectations. At fluorescents, you know, put, add into the environment about 100 and some odd BTUs per watt. And I'm looking at where, you know, the conversion from the T8s and T5s and to the, the lead, let's generate a lot less heat than the fluorescents. And the, you know, the amount of cooling, that has to be adjusted because the, the less BTUs added into the environment in the school. So, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm reviewing this now to see what's what.
Yeah. You're, you're accurate in that. So, the, the LED lights are cooler to the touch. However, the, the biggest change was, was going from the older fluorescent and incandescent lights. So, if you've ever pulled an incandescent light bulb, they're really hot to the touch.
Oh, yeah. Tell me.
Yeah. If the, these fluorescent bulbs, the T5s and the T8s are not, are not, they're not generating a significant amount of BTUs that they're, they're like, you know, if, if the lights were on but the boilers were off, you wouldn't have a warm school. They're not putting a ton of, a ton of heat out. So, there is, there is some cooling and, and heating adjustment, but it's, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't significantly impact the heating or the cooling loads of a building with LED lights.
Okay.
Okay. Because I, you know, when I, I do this, because I used to teach, you know, the heating and air conditioning and et cetera. And I always look at the, the load, because I, you know, when I was involved in this quite heavily with a chain company and with my previous employers, I had to do psychometric evaluations and, you know, looking at the amount of fluorescent lights and heat generated by body, you know, the amount of bodies that are being in the room. And, you know, then to balance it out so that I knew how, exactly how much heating or cooling that had to take place in these, in these areas. So, right now, I, you know, all of a sudden, I, I find out I have to review some of this stuff and make some kind of determination. So, I'd like to know, you know, what the, you know, with the, the, the lead fixtures, how much heat that they do generate. But they do generate some heat, but not as much as the fluorescents. So, I'd like to get, you know, a handle on that so that I can determine what we would may, you know, maybe have to adjust in the heating or cooling, lighting especially in the, in the classrooms.
Yeah. I, I would agree. So, when we did, when we do an energy model that came up with the savings, we do put in the different, the different light loads. I will say that, that the differences on the heating side are negligible. There's a benefit on the cooling side. And we could, I could share those calculations.
Good. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay. Are you, are you finished, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman, you had your hand up.
Thank you. So, every business thinks they're going to stay in business forever, right? And I surely hope you do. But we're looking at a 20-year contract with a, a lease payment. We're, we're making a 20-year commitment. Will the school be here in 20 years? Probably. We're pretty good. We're a city. We're not going anywhere. Is there some, I'm going to use a word. I'm not sure it's the right term. Is there some, um, I'm gonna use a word, I'm not sure if it's the right terminology, so Mr. Donovan, correct me absolutely, some kind of a performance bond that the company could take out for maybe the first two, three, four, not more than five years? I, cause like you said, I, I agree that once the system's up and running, you're gonna know how it's gonna work or not and you, you'll tweak it accordingly. But just as a little bit of a hedge, so, you know, I, I don't know if that's outrageous to ask for, or I think it's prudent, but...
So there is, what's already included in this number is a, is a payment and performance bond so that, um, if at any point during the construction period, um, which would likely be a two, a two summer, two year, two, two, at least calendar year project, um, if at any point during that, um, timeframe, our company were to, um, go under, that there's insurance that the work would be completed. Um, what you may be, so that's already included, a payment and performance bond, which is, it's required by state law for projects of this size anyway. Um, what is, what you may be asking for is, um, is an inefficiency bond, which would be a guarant, a guarantee on the, um, on the energy savings for a certain amount of time, uh, which could be five years. Those add, those add a, a couple percentage points to the value of the project. And I've, I've had customers request them before and then when they see the added costs and, and look at our financial statements, they've, they've previously determined that default in the, in like, let's say the first five years is, is highly unlikely, which I, I would say is true. Um, and, and that's been waived. So it's an option that we could provide, but it's not one that we've actually, um, had performed before.
If I can ask Mr. Donovan to comment about that.
Yeah, I think it's one of those things you can certainly, we can ask, get the pricing on it and then you compare the risk of that versus the risk of them going out of business or, so it's a, it's a, it's a risk review that you would do.
So I have a, thank you. So the question about maintenance, does this fall into Mr. Smith's, uh, regular budget? The diminishing returns of, uh, vanishing money? That is insufficient.
Well, if, if they do the work and everything that's in here gets performed, then it's gotta make my job easier.
Right. You, you talked about deferred maintenance before, so this actually takes a load off your budget in a way, cause you've replaced equipment, that should last way beyond your retirement date.
That's always my goal.
Okay, well, you know, I just had to ask. Oh, I have one other question. The, uh, you're going to fixtures that pull so much less energy. You said down to 28 watts per fixture. Are these lights, um, I'll just say powered over the internet?
Uh, no.
No, okay. So you're using, are you running separate wires to your own panels? Or you're using existing wires, just running more things off of them? Okay, thank you. Do you anticipate upgrading the wiring in the buildings?
It's, it's not usually required.
Okay. So let me, let me ask this question. It's a problem for us in the middle and the elementary schools, right? Lack of outlets all over the place. Is that an issue in the high school? Is that something that, is this an opportunity to address that if we need them?
I, I think you hit it on, right on the head. I, I've heard of issues, particularly at the elementary school and a little bit less in the middle school. I really haven't heard much in the high school level.
Is that something we can just validate with the principals? Because this looks like a time when it's totally appropriate for the need. And because you are, you wanna look 15 and 20 years out, right? And electricity usage, it may be less, maybe consistent over time because you have efficiencies over time, but they just might need more outlets because there's just so many more things you're gonna end up plugging in.
Right. I can certainly ask.
Yeah, I think that would be worthwhile because otherwise the high schools will then be where the elementary schools are. And we, you know, if we can anticipate that now, that would probably be worthwhile.
What, what will be nice from this project is that the electrical savings from the transformer replacement and the LED lighting, you're gonna add a lot more electrical capacity to the building.
Another question, um, thanks for asked, bringing up the efficiency of the, uh, of, sorry, the transformers. So I'm curious, you, these were, I made a note here, what, standard efficiency?
Yep.
And then you said we should really upgrade to a higher efficiency. So could you share with us what the differences are and then I wanna make an observation?
Yeah, so the, the, the high efficiency ones tend to be about 99.7% efficient. It, it, the reason I say about, it varies depending on the load. Um, so, and, um, the, the, the standard efficiency ones at the time, um, were in the 94% to 95%. So it doesn't sound like a huge difference, but it means that, um, 3% of your power is just being lost because of the amount of step-down transformers throughout the building. Um, so as a, as an improvement measure, uh, we're recommending the higher efficiency, uh, units.
So with the middle school project, can we make sure we're gonna use the high efficiency ones as, that that gets put into the spec? Cause it just seems as though they took an easy way out when they built, I don't know if those even, those things even existed, the 15 years ago or 18 or 20 years ago when you started planning it, but certainly for the next building projects, uh, since we're going new, if you can just go high efficiency?
Yeah, the technology has advanced so much in the last 15 years. You think about, I mean, LED didn't really exist as a light fixture, so it's, the whole industry has gotten much more efficient.
Okay, thank you.
So are we looking for a motion?
Um, what do you need from us to... So you need to give us a formal proposal, brush this one up, give us the alternatives for the 15 and 20-year bonds? So do you need to come back?
Uh, so, so, uh, sometimes what happens is the, um, the subcommittees that we work with will say, make those changes and then bring the options to the full board. Other times, uh, we're asked to come back with the changes to, to a subcommittee, so that's really, um, um, up to this group.
I, I would say because we are so close to having, uh, I believe, a majority of the new board, uh, new members to the board, I, I would say it, I think it should come back to a subcommittee in January or February and I don't know what that timeline does for you people. I don't know if that would work, but I think that would be appropriate with so many new, new members and then have it go to the full board. Mr. Donovan or Mr. Smith, do you have a...
Is there, Mike, is there a timing?
Uh, this, so like anything, the sooner the better, but, um, the, the only, um, the only, uh, comment I would have is if, if you did wanna push it, um, to, that, keeping in mind that the intent right now was to do the work in the summer of, of 2020. So the, the, the closer you get to that date, the more we start getting very difficult to get material in time. And so that, that would be my, my only, um, just keeping that in mind. You wouldn't wanna, let's say, push it all the way to March or something like that. I guess the goal would be to, if you want it to be in January, to be in like, like the February board meeting.
Mr. Kaufman?
I, I appreciate, um, what you're saying and I, I, I do agree with that. What if, to try and move it along at the same time, give the next board an opportunity to dive into it? What if the, this committee sees this updated information next month, makes a recommendation to the board, you still retain it in committee in January when you have your new members, but you're going to have a vetted proposal, right? We're finding anomalies here now. That would be in December, all, all that would be cleared up. You'd have the lease options. You'd really have a more full package that's been vetted that can be handed to the next team, uh, the next committee. So in, in the spirit of moving it along and helping you guys get your momentum and at the same time, let us help vet it for the next committee, I mean, if, I don't know if that works with that scenario, but I, I would be in favor of that, trying to accomplish both.
Yeah, I, personally, I think that's fine. Can you have everything done for the December or whatever the date is, the 10th or the 12th, whatever?
So the, my intent would be to make this a prelim, to take this from a, take your feedback from today and make it into a preliminary. And then, um, it would just, it would just be, I guess, i- is, is the 15-year option a strong, uh, possibility that you wanna see or do you think making, cause if it wants to be cash neutral, it probably needs to be 20 years. Do you, is, is...
Yeah, I think having both options would be interesting, especially, let's say if we got the results that Plymouth got, then maybe it would work out that way. I'm not, you know, I know there'd be no guarantee on that obviously, but...
Mr. Kaufman?
So I'm curious, so the savings, we, we have a lease payment, $200,000 as a, just a, a number for illustration purposes. And we pay that lease payment out of the operating budget and actually our electric bill is gonna be 190,000. So we're achieving a $10,000 a month spread of savings. Does that go back to our operating budget or is that how you guys, do you get paid or...
That goes back to your operating budget.
Okay.
So, so the, the, the question that gets asked a lot, so let's just say you had a, a surplus like, like Plymouth did of $80,000 or $90,000. What you, what you cannot do is make, like what I sometimes try and do with my mortgage at home, is make some extra payments. You can't make extra payments. You can pay, prepay the entire thing off at once. Um, so there's no, there's, there's, uh, you can pay it off, I think it says it right in here that for 101...
102%.
102%. Yeah, you can pay it off at any time. I have had, I've heard of two other scenarios that, that school districts have done. One is, um, when they had big surpluses, they refinanced it to a shorter term and used that, that as a down payment. The other, um, is when, when school districts have had sort of surpluses in the entire budget, just pay the entire thing off at once, um, with the extra energy savings.
I don't know if we'd ever have that kinda cash.
Now, that's, that's probably not gonna happen, that kind of savings.
I do have a question for Mr. Donovan. Can those savings, let's say it's $10,000 a month or whatever that, whatever that is, how it works out, can that be banked into deferred maintenance account or something? Can, can we, cause it's operating budget, it, you know, so I know that there are different buckets.
It, it can't necessarily, I mean, we could, we could request an escrow, that's one process. But the other thing would be if we were, we'd see these savings month by month, right? So if we came to the end of the year and we said, hey, we're expecting A and we ended up with a larger number, we could use it that year towards some of Mr. Smith's deferred maintenance items. His list is always endless.
I know, it's always long and, and accurate. So, I mean, my preference would be to try, you know, let the, let this committee say, we realize that deferred maintenance is always, uh, stressed to the edge and actually we cut it more than we give him money so that if there are savings from these projects that if it's, if it can be expended in the current year, you really can't carry over to the next year, right? But...
No, unless...
But you'll know by April if you have an extra 50 or 100,000 and you could go after one of those projects.
Yes, that's probably what we would do. Um, we can't, you know, some school districts, if they're independent, we're a dependent school district with the city. If you're independent, you can sort of save it, put it on your balance sheet, hold on, but we can't, we don't really do that. We do have an escrow where we could say, we're gonna use this for, so that's our shot at savings, but that has to go through the alderman and things like that.
And that has to be spent that same fiscal year?
No, you give, it extends the time. It gives you a little more time if you go through that process, but there's no guarantee you do it. The best way to do it so that you, the school district, can continue to control it is to spend it in that year.
Okay, so when, assuming the board does move forward, it'll be in January when they vote, I would, Mrs. Oden, I would try and put that into the motion that says if there is, our surpluses developed as a result of these programs, that we want that, um, targeted for, uh, maintenance expenses in the current year if there's any surplus that we benefit.
Well, I, I would hate to see that in the motion. I think that's up to the next board. They'll, they'll be dealing with it longer, they'll have the contract and I would leave it up to the next board.
No, I'm saying that would be something I would suggest this committee make in January. I'm not gonna be here, obviously. But I'm saying, I think it would be a pretty good safeguard to put in place, knowing, in other words, this, this committee had an intent when it moved it forward, that that, at least that discussion would be part of the discussion in January so the board could actually do that. Cause I think that, uh, it's a, trying to bail you out, Mr. Smith, I just want you to know I'm trying. If you ever get it, I have no idea, but I, I'll just say this now, I totally value everything you've done for the district and appreciate, you know, your projecting ability and, and keeping us ahead of the, the, uh, the proverbial, proverbial breakdown curve. So I'm trying to see if we could build some money into this, from the savings into your budget. I tried, maybe it'll happen.
I, I appreciate it.
Bring it up in January.
Okay, so I am looking for a motion. Mr. Mosher, do you have a motion?
Uh, not really.
Okay.
I thought we were gonna bring it back next month with an updated proposal.
Well, we could make a motion about that, to bring it back. Uh, we move to, uh, delay this until...
Or, or you could move to have EEI finalize the, uh, audit and come back with final numbers for...
And the 15 and the 20-year options.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Finalize the...
Finalize the investment grade audit and...
15-year lease options.
Provide 15 and 20-year lease options. I think that can be the motion.
Now, I do have a question, I'll second, I'll make the motion on behalf of Mr. Donovan since he can't do that.
Okay, do we, we have a second, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman has a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I lost it.
Oh, okay. Well, the motion is move to have EEI finalize the investment grade audit and provide a 15 and 20-year, uh, lease options. Provide the cost, provide the, provide 15 and 20-year lease options. Okay. Thank you.
So the one question I have would be to the natural gas price, because later tonight we're gonna find out that we lost our supplier and we have to go find a new one or we'll default to whomever the local people are.
We have a plan for that, but that's, that's electricity, not the natural gas.
Oh, oh, I misunderstood. Oh, okay, then withdrawing.
Okay, let's vote, we'd like to vote on the motion. Uh, who was the first? How, Mr. Kaufman made the motion, Mr. Mosher seconded it. Okay, roll call. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes. Pass unanimously. Thank you so much, gentlemen, appreciate your time. See you, see you in December. No, I'm not singing. Okay, and now we have, um, Mr. Rodriguez is here for the second item on the agenda is the Chromebook issue.
Could we just speak, Sean, speak to the Agara since we're on the energy thing and then we can switch to Mr. Rodriguez, please?
Okay.
Okay, um, so Agara Energy has filed for bankruptcy and we've been aware of that for actually a couple of months. Originally, they were assuring us there'd be no change in everything. Um, they're actually part of a larger firm called Exelon who owns a number of, uh, firms like Agara. You've probably heard of Constellation Energy, that's one of their many, uh, firms underneath the big umbrella. So, um, then we got the letter just this past week from Agara saying that, uh, we'll be going back to ever-source rates, um, at some point, uh, later this month. back to EverSource rates at some point later this month. And they provided a list of all, basically every single school, for the most part. So, what I would propose to you is we don't want to pay EverSource default rate, if we can all avoid it. And this is kind of a quick process, not really enough for me to send an RFP out and sort through everything, give you a good recommendation before we, the switch over to EverSource takes place. So, I'd like to go out to, to the firms we've dealt with quite a bit, and one is Constellation Energy, another one's Direct Energy. Direct Energy actually has our natural gas contract currently, but they also do electricity. Get their, do a best and final price from them right up front, and then, then we have a couple of choices. I could bring it to a board meeting and just go directly to them. You could authorize Mr. Donovan to just award the contract. What do you think, Dan?
We're, we're looking at sort of a one-year.
We would do it for one year.
So, it'd be a one-year deal which would cover what this existing contract, yes, so sort of a bridge, we do a one-year bridge, then we'd also begin the process of working on a longer-term thing. So, I think that just makes financial sense, because we don't like, as Mr. Smith said, we don't want to go back paying the, the rate with the utility. Let's, let's get our, let's get the savings for the next year, and then we can tie down something. This is a, this is a kind of, something that rarely happens. So, I think, I think that makes sense, if we just get the okay to go ahead and get a one-year rate. If, if the board wants to approve it, fine.
Do you think you know by next week? I mean, we have a board meeting on Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
So, the agendas could be set, I mean, I'm sure you can get it on.
I could try, I could try. I think, we should be able to get pricing that quickly. You know, alert them tomorrow morning and get, so, basically, the way they give you a price, and you know the market fluctuates so much, they give your price, and the next day, it's already changed for them. But, you know, if I get a, so if you meet on Wednesday, if I get a final price Wednesday morning, or even Wednesday afternoon, then that should, that should work.
You know, I would, I think you should bring it to the board, just for awareness, and, because the other people aren't going to know that, oh, this is going to be a bridge, and we're going back out for a whole RFP thing, and this is really a gap saving, gap saving? And I just think that helps to put things in perspective, and I think it's just better off for everybody. So, is, Mr. Donovan, would that, do you find that okay?
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Take more work for you, is what I'm really asking, does it?
Yeah, no, no, not really. If we can, if we can get the pricing, and if not, then we can go whenever the next meeting is, which, because we don't know exactly when we're being transferred over. This was dated October 30th, it may be December 30th, so we may have a little bit of time.
Oh, so you don't even have a cutoff date yet?
It doesn't have a specific cutoff date. At least 30 to 60.
30 to 60 days, okay.
Yeah, so, but the sooner the better, but.
So, it could be the end of the calendar year, which gives you plenty of time to figure it out.
Right. Or it could be the end of November, and then we don't have much time.
Is there any way to find that out?
We can go back to them and say, can you narrow down the date any for us? Just takes a phone call.
Well, the board meeting's on the 20th. If for some reason, perhaps, we don't have the pricing, and we're up against a wall, so we could not be in place for November 30th, then maybe it makes sense to go back to them and, and ask them for an extension till the end of the year. I mean, I don't know, we'll, we'll figure that out, but.
Mr. Mosher, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I like the, the idea of going back to the full board to get their personal opinions on our options. And I think that's, you know, the proper thing to do, rather than just rely on our three members as, you know, a kind of a fallback. So, I, I would think it'd be a good idea just to go to the full board with it. And in the meantime, that we can inquire and see when is the cutoff date.
Okay.
So, that kind of has us out on a string, but, you know, what are you going to do? This is what happens.
Okay. Are you looking for a motion on this, or?
No, I don't think so, we're just informing you really.
That's what we have to do at this point, okay? Thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Rodriguez, we're to the Chromebook.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming on this cold night.
Yeah, no problem. As Mr. Donovan brought up, the Chromebooks, specific models for the HP 11G3 and G4 are, the auto-update policy set by Google and the manufacturer of the Chromebooks is ending June 2020. I know that probably doesn't mean a lot to a lot of you, but for us and how it impacts a district, it's the automatic software updates that are set by Google for security patches and firmware upgrades will no longer be provided as of June 2020. What we can expect, devices may not work over time, not necessarily right away. After speaking with Google, they, they were rather ambiguous, but they assured that it, these devices won't work over time. So, that's, so it's kind of playing Russian roulette with our current devices that we use for pretty much everything. Short-term, according to Google, they may still work. However, they'll be, they will be functional with limitations. As with any software with new computers, especially with Chrome, they will work with the current operating system that they're on. But any versions going forward, and Google puts forth new updates for their operating system on pretty much a weekly, by, it's just more versions come for every, every month that, or every day that goes by. So, whether it be a security, a security fix, or a bug fix, whatever, long-term, the devices will become less and less functional. Security, like I said, may be compromised, no patches, no updates equal no patches, no bug fixes, and it leaves a district less vulnerable moving forward.
Can you tell me approximately how many of these Chromebooks the district has?
Over 2,000 right now, yeah.
And have some of them been purchased within the last couple of years?
The, I'm not entirely sure, but the influx came, I would say around 2016. So, the, the average lifespan for Chromebooks is around, depending on the model, it's around four to five years, so. Just to go, just go back, so, what teachers rely on, we, through the Chromebooks, we have over 100 extensions and applications. This includes BrainPop, Amplify, and Zern. And we also rely, rely on them for our standard, for most of them on our standardized testing. So, with iReady.
Yeah.
And community-based testing, SAS, and WIDA. So, we really rely on these Chromebooks for a lot of our teaching and learning, and testing in the district.
Not good news tonight. Mr. Kaufman?
So, an average lifespan of four to five years, so, a lot of these computers, we're not even going to get the full life that we paid for out of them.
No, we should, the, when they're purchased, they only sell them for the year that they're sold for. So, let's say they were bought in 2016, then the four years would be June 2020, so it's about the four years.
So, this was foreseeable, as I shared with you, you know, I shared with him what I was going to say now, is I've been on the board for four years, at every opportunity, I asked for a technology plan. We haven't had one in this committee, I've asked for the strategic plan, there wasn't one including the strategic plan. There should be a technology plan as part of the middle school project, there isn't. So, now, all of a sudden, we're hitting a wall on 2,000 computers. The average cost to replace one is about 250 bucks, I'm guessing?
Ballpark, yeah.
A little more, a little less?
Less, yeah.
So, that's a lot of money for us. And there's no, we just can't accommodate that. I don't know what you're going to do in the budget cycle. So, maybe that education aid that's lurking in the background, I know how I would have spent it, you're talking about almost a half a million dollars just in Chromebooks. So, I don't know. Mr. Donovan, you have some thoughts, where you're going, you're going to pull some money out of your, your hat?
No, the hat doesn't have anything in it. I don't even have my hat tonight, coldest night of the year. But we will, we, we will be, as we go, as we prepare the budget over the next six weeks or so, we've already decided we're going to sit down, we're going to talk about this, and we're going to sort of put some proposals together. You know, one of the options is that sort of extra money that the state sent down, that's going to be discussed more, I think, later in the month of November, as far as how much is actually going to be defined by the school district versus the city, and I'm not getting in the middle of that right now. But that's, that's one option. But I think going forward, we have to look and say, okay, these Chromebooks, they're not, they're not going to be like a laptop or a desktop that you can extend for two or three years if you want. They're going to be basically throwaway after five or six years.
Correct.
So, they're going to be more like a supply. So, I think that we're really going to have to take a look and say, okay, is this something that we're looking to move towards one-to-one sort of tool? Or is it something we're going to maybe change over time? So, I think it, it's a big, big picture that isn't going to be answered immediately. What will be answered in the next few weeks is some sort of plan for at least next year's budget. And hopefully, we'll also know by then of the money that came from the state, how much is available, so.
Mr. Kaufman?
So, I would encourage the, the board, future board, to really develop a technology plan. And I think you have to look at leasing these things instead of buying them, right? Because after three years, at the end of the lease, they're done, and they're replaced, and you're always current. Now, we're in the bind of taking them to the, the point where they expire, and we're left hanging, and we're vulnerable on 2,000 Chromebooks. Same would be true for the desktops and laptops also. I know other school districts, Merrimack, for example, they rent, they lease their equipment, and they don't have these kinds of problems. The same thing with having the servers ourselves and being on the cloud. That needs to be looked at. I've tried for four years, haven't gotten anywhere. Maybe someone, maybe, maybe people will realize that you need to have a viable technology plan, because now, we're, you know, we're facing a, will they find the money from the state? Yeah. Will it hopefully go and solve this problem? Probably, you'll be in the same problem four years from now. The other side of that is, where I wanted to see that state money go was in remedial activity, and we're going to dump it into computers instead. I think the kids need it in a remedial, that's another conversation. I think, are we going to see this again in finance? We need a number, or you're just going to bring that to finance once you do some planning over the next few weeks? Or you're just going to hold out and bring it to the budget committee?
I don't have an answer yet, until I do the work, I don't know. Because I don't know when we're going to be done, but it.
Thank you. Can I make a motion?
No, I have a couple of questions. How, I have a laptop at home. My son gave me, he put software on there that makes a laptop like a Chromebook.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Do you know how much, I don't even know the name of it, he wasn't home from work, I couldn't contact him. Do you, do you have any idea how much the software costs to put on a laptop, to make a laptop work like a Chromebook?
I don't, but the amount of, the amount to buy a laptop is, is three and four times more expensive to buy a Chromebook. So, Chromebook is a decent laptop, at least the ones that we use in the district are around $800.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So, there is a major difference, because you're looking at enterprise, like hardware that's used for work every day, and a laptop that we use within the district, as opposed to a device for learning, which is around, you know, $200 to $250.
And the life of a laptop is approximately?
It depends how hard it's being used. Within our district, they can range, I don't know, I'm ballparking three to seven years.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks. Okay, Mr. Mosher, do you have anything you'd like to ask or comment about?
Well, I'll tell you, it's like this. In the beginning, we, I talked about Chromebooks, and right from the beginning, I did not like Chromebooks, and I would not have one, because I did not trust them, and I, I knew that they were not going to last. My experience, I had a laptop, a regular laptop, and it lasted, I had it upgraded, memory increased, and extended the, the use of the thing until it finally, the software crashed, not the computer, but the software. And, sorry to say, I, right now, I am really kind of flabbergasted that we, we went and spent so much money on Chromebooks, and we could have done something else. I don't like, don't like them, never, never would have one. And even my brother, who is the more computer savvy than even I am, he would not have one either. So, I don't know, I think that we're in a bind with these, these things, and that eventually they're going to become expensive doorstops. So, we have to work out some kind of plan that is going to solve our problem, and I think that we're going to have to look at our techies and see what can be done, if anything. Otherwise, we can get a truck and just chuck them in there. So, I don't, I don't know, I, right now, I am just flabbergasted with the, the whole idea of the, what's happening with Chromebooks. I'm sorry, but right now, my mind is, is abuzz with all kinds of things going on in there, but I don't see any, anything coming out soon. I would say that we would have to do some investigating, and this is going to be one of those things that's going to fall on the next board. So, it's going to be, you know, January, February, and maybe March, before we get, get anything straightened away.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Porter?
Yeah, I just want to answer. Mr. Mosher, thank you for that. I just want to let you know, we didn't stop buying laptops. The laptops are still part of the district, and we still purchase them. It's just that Chromebooks are, are 25% of the cost of the laptops, and they can reach far more students in the district. So, we're still buying both laptops and Chromebooks.
Okay. Ms. Porter, I know you're here, and I know what you're thinking, because I'm thinking the same thing.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm kind of speechless. I know that in the strategic plan, one of the goals is to come up with a technology plan that was beyond the scope of what we could do in that, but it is outlined that we, and we do desperately need one, because, I mean, if you just think of the testing, testing is not the primary concern. I know that as a teacher, I really liked my Chromebook cart, and it was quite functional for what we needed, so I'm, and I, and I had a laptop cart at one point, too, and I actually liked the Chromebook cart better. But this is, yeah, I'm kind of speechless, but thank you for bringing it forward, and I hope we can work out a solution.
Right, I agree.
And my concern is, we have just tied ourselves to a science program, Amplify, and I believe the contract is seven years. And we don't have enough Chromebooks for that at this point. We're looking, maybe should we get more? I guess, from what I've heard secondhand, that they, Amplify would really like every child to have one, or a two-to-one, if that's not possible. And here we are now with, wow, maybe we would have gone with another science. maybe we would've gone with another science program. This is frustrating. Mr. Kaufman?
I would like to make a motion to require the administration to develop a technology plan prior to the next budget cycle.
Um, I won't second that at this point. We do not have a Director of Technology at this point. I would want that person to be involved in the technology plan, and I think before you do that, you have to know what's in the system and get involved in it. So, I think to put a constraint on that, for me, at this point, I can't support that.
Uh, Mr. Mosher, would you support my motion?
Yeah, I agree with, uh, with the previous speaker, because we have to have somebody who is knowledgeable of our system and everything else, and to do some, uh, deep diving into the, the, uh, the situation. I, I can't, I can't see supporting it.
You're right, we do need one.
So, the problem is, you'll never, you won't be prepared to take the next steps when the new director gets here, even if this were just, which it really is largely research, and then, once you know what you have, you can speak to what you need. We're being very short-sighted here. I think it's gonna take some time to replace Mr. Farron Koff, just by virtue of the talent that's out there, and, and where these directors go, because the school district can't compete with private industry, and it's gonna be very difficult. And if you're gonna wait until you hire a director, then I believe you'll be waiting way longer than you think, and you'll be behind a bigger eight ball. But that's, I, I put it out there, that, that was my job. What, what the committee decides is up to them.
Okay. So, we don't have a second for the motion. Okay. Uh, do you have any other comments for us, Mr. Rodriguez? It's, oh, this is frustrating.
Uh, just, I'll comment on the technology plan. It is outlined in the strategic plan to have one developed by the fall of 2020, so we, we, it is in the infant stages of, of being developed right now, so, let's go off of what you said, Mr. Kaufman, then...
For me, it's too little, too late.
Thank you so much, and thank you to your teammates. I know you have, how many people do you have in the technology department now?
Fourteen total.
Fourteen total, wow.
Correct.
Okay, we'll thank them, and...
Will do.
You know, tell them, we know they get a lot of work coming with the strategic plan and developing the technology plan.
Well, we look forward to doing it.
Pardon?
We look forward to doing it.
Good. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for coming out on this cold night. Thanks.
No problem.
Crossing...
I'll send you that material that I spoke about earlier.
Uh, next, the crossing guard.
Okay, usually, once, maybe twice a year, we sort of give an update on the crossing guards. Since it's sort of a safety-related issue, it seems to make the newspaper every once in a while, too. It has been a struggle for the last few years finding all the crossing guards necessary. So, I spoke with Mr. Lassard. He sent in a memo, which is in your packet, talking about sort of the situation where we are now. We're down three and a half crossing guards. One of them is at Broad Street, right outside the school there. Upstone is the street that runs off Broad and Carmine, so, we don't have a permanent, but we've been able to cover that with custodial staff. So, there has been a person there most days. It's not a permanent person, but it is a person. So, that's, that's been working okay. Elm Street, in front of the school, has a permanent assignment in the afternoon, but not in the morning. We've been able to fill most of the time with the crossing guard sub, but we're short of, sort of a half, a half a person, so to speak. And then, Penachuck at Manchester and Ferry, which is right up near the school. I think we did, hopefully, this will, it won't be for a couple of years, but with the, with the construction and the road changes and the lights and that sort of stuff, it should improve. But this has been, I, my sense of looking back at, if I went back and looked at all the crossing guard openings, this has been a very difficult spot to fill. It's almost, it's had more openings, I think, than most others have. Not sure why, but, so, we've been covering it with crossing guard subs best we can. And then, there's a temporary vacancy at West Hollis and 12th Street, due to medical leave, but hopefully, come December slash January, that will get, that will get cleared up. So, Chris continues to use subs, custodians, the security guard that we have at the high school, the outside guard, he moves around to various places. So, and, and one of the other things that I'll sort of have available at budget time would be, okay, let's say if we, um, took the crossing guards and guaranteed them an hour each shift. How much would that cost, and might that help us in the, in the future? We did look at that before. It's a more significant cost. I think it was, it was out there in the budget two or three years ago. It was one of the items that was reduced. I'm not 100% sure that doing that would, would get you the, would get, if, I mean, if you could guarantee it, I think it'd be a worthwhile investment, but I'm not sure you can guarantee it. I know you can't guarantee it. So, that's kind of where we are with the crossing guards.
So, are you saying they don't get paid for a full hour?
Yeah, if it's a half hour in the morning, a half hour in the afternoon, they just get paid for the half hours.
You're looking for somebody to come and work for half an hour and get, wow. Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if it's right outside your house, it's, it's not bad, but if you have to travel to go there. They, the posts vary in time. There are some a half hour, some are 45 minutes, some are an hour.
What are the custodian, are they getting paid for a full hour for covering?
Yes, they get paid for the full hour.
So, they get paid a full hour, but the person whose job it is doesn't get paid a full hour?
Do they get, do they get a, I think in the...
Excuse me, could you just, okay, thank you.
So, I think in the maintenance, in the custodial contracts, the folks that do cover the crossing guards, don't they get a premium, premium as well?
They were getting a premium as well with the new contract. That is no longer the case, but they do get a minimum of an hour, yes.
What is the basic hourly rate for the custodians that might cover that? I realize it varies, 'cause you never know who the assignment is.
Yeah, the, the base level custodian, 18, right around now, about 1850, 1880, something like that. The crossing guard makes around 16 something. Yeah, it's not a huge difference, but that hour versus the half hour.
So, by having a custodian cover and get paid for the hour, you're paying, so, putting it in the budget would be basically what's happening right now, anyway, instead of the crossing guard getting it.
But we don't cover. It's not covered every single one.
Okay, so, how many crossing guards are there?
Um, good question. You think around 25 or 30?
It varies between 30, 35.
So, it would be two hours a day for each of them, right?
Yes.
'Cause they would get their morning and their afternoon. Okay.
So, we'll, like I said, we'll run those numbers as part of the budget and...
Okay.
See what...
The Penachuck, in speaking with the principal on our visit there, he had a, a husband and wife who were working there. One was doing the morning, afternoon, they were sharing that. Is that still happening? Do, does anybody know? No?
No, I don't know that.
Okay.
I can check on that.
And they could be the, the subs, yeah. Now, Elm Street has a permanent assignment in the afternoon. What, what do you mean an assignment? Is that a teacher is, is assigned to that?
No, it's, it's a person, but they can only do the afternoon.
Oh, okay, okay. I guess the one that really concerns me is West Hollis and 12th. They all concern me. But knowing, uh, in the Manchester Street, cars can go pretty fast down there, and West Hollis Street, I can't imagine an elementary school trying to, child trying to get a, get across West Hollis Street in the morning. That, that, that's real troubling to me.
Yeah, I mean, they, they cross where the, where the light is there. So, there is a light, there is a, you know, the, the button. But I think that's one of the ones we try to fill with the security guard a lot.
Where the Salvation Army is or was?
Was?
Yes, exactly.
With Susie's Market?
Yes.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's busy. Got cars coming from four different directions.
Can someone from the district office cover that? That's like a five-minute walk from the district.
I don't, we haven't considered that, I don't know.
Huh. Okay, wow. If anybody out there is listening, if you have some, wanna pick up a little extra, and unfortunately, it's not a whole lot, and it's, it's broken up into little pieces and breaks up the whole day. I can understand why it's difficult to find these people again. Okay. Um, moving on, contract.
This is a Mr. Smith contract, so I will let him speak to it.
So, as you know, in our operating budget, we put aside a certain amount of money for equipment replacement. Generally speaking, it's equipment that's pretty much already dead. When we're putting in for the budget, in some cases, it's near the end of its service life. So, we have the money in the budget expressly for this purpose. So, the, proposing to buy three pieces of equipment, two of them are going to New Surles Elementary, and one to Main Dunstable. These are floor machines, auto scrubber, and a burnisher, and just for your edification, a burnisher is, the floors are already waxed, you're just shining it up. That'll take place several times a week. Scrubber is kind of what you would think would be, you're actually scrubbing, you're getting the dirt and stains out. Get a lot of use out of that, especially in the summertime, or when we're redoing a floor. So, in this case, we're asking for two burnishers and one auto scrubber. Cleanorama is our vendor, they do provide a pretty good discount, varies 15 to 18% under their list price for the particular equipment. What we've been trying to standardize on the janitorial equipment for spare parts reasons, is that we only have limited warehouse capacity, and if we, we're just trying to stay with one set of equipment, instead of getting all sorts of different types. So, for that reason, it's not competitive procurement, but it's a sole source, but for training and for repair purposes, this is the equipment that we like to stick with, and it's very durable, does last. The total amount is, for the three pieces of equipment, is $18,781.67, and the accounting string is listed on your memo, and that is our miscellaneous equipment line.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman?
Definitely want you to have the equipment. I've seen what, the magic, the way the floors look in the, in the summer, after you guys have done all that work. And, but that's, you know, that's, that's the, that's the result. I'm curious, are you able to scavenge parts? Are they, are the, are the units, you know, is the design of the unit stable enough that the parts from a couple of years ago can be scavenged into something more recent?
Not really. Technology, believe it or not, does change, even with these machines. For a while, we were buying riding machines, which we still have some. But no, I mean, one generation to the next now. We tend to keep these things till they're pretty dead. You know, it's like keeping your car for 300,000 miles, so by the time you get to that point, it's time for the junkyard.
Do those things depreciate? Do they have a depreciation schedule? Are they a three-year or a five-year thing?
We don't depreciate them.
Well, yeah, they, they get depreciated over, it's either three or five years for all this sort of equipment.
Okay, and how long do you keep them? You get six, eight out of them?
I was gonna say five to eight.
Okay. Three free? Three free? Not really.
Mr. Mosher, do you have anything?
Yeah, I think that the machines have, have seen better days, and I think what they're doing, we can't save parts from one to, for the other, but I think Sean is smart enough to know that when something has reached its, its burial date, we should bury it, buy new ones.
Okay, thank you. I have a, a question. When I was touring the schools, I, I noticed how nice some of them looked, and I was told by, and I can't remember what school it was at, by a custodian, well, some of the schools had extra wax, so they were able to put on two coats on the floors rather than just one. And, um, I, I don't know, some schools looked better than others, and if that's true, it might be worth having two coats of wax put on, because some schools just did not look as nicely as some of the others.
Yeah, so, the, even wax technology has changed over the years. It wasn't unheard of 20 years ago to put six coats of wax on a floor. It was just, it was a different wax. Much more, the VOCs back then were much higher, you didn't really wanna breathe them in, and so those have been slowly but surely moved out of it. So, I suspect what you saw, I could be wrong, but I suspect might have to do with where we had summer school, and when you timed up the extra wax down. You know, like Amer Street, we use that every summer. Fairgrounds, Led Street, I would suspect those are probably the schools where you might see the dollar floors. I don't know what, if you gave me a list of those schools that were...
Oh, I, I didn't write it down.
Dollar, I could, I could check it out.
I didn't write it down, I just happened to notice as I was going through, so, I just, I just thought that was interesting, that some schools had two coats and some only one, so, okay, thank you.
Just as an aside, you know, Sean is right about the, the, the waxes and the, the formulations, and he mentioned the VOCs. Now, just for the information, VOC is volatile organic compounds, and they can, in concentration, be very, very bad.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mosher. Mr. Kaufman?
Move to approve the...
Purchase?
The, yes, the replacement of the three pieces of equipment from Cleanorama for a total cost of $18,781.67.
I second it.
Would, would it be all right? Ms., Ms. Porter's been working here. Motion to purchase two burnishers and one scrubber for a total of $18,781.67 from account 91-1-22-2620-71999 miscellaneous equipment.
I would mention the vendor as part of that, that got left out of that.
Just put it at the end. Okay, Ms., Ms. Porter will read the amended motion.
All right. Motion to purchase two burnishers and one scrubber from Cleanorama for $18,781.67 from account 91 dot 1 dot 22 dot 2620 dot 71999 miscellaneous equipment. Is that all right?
I'll, you know, second and...
Well, I can't make a motion.
She can't make it, she just read it.
I know, I accept the amendment, if however you want it, I mean...
Can we just, okay, so I'll just say it's...
Yeah, I'm, I'm all good with it personally.
Okay, thank you.
Whatever that means.
Mr. Mosher?
I had, I had seconded it before.
Okay, all right. Well, we had to change it just a bit.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Okay, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes?
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is a yes, and a motion passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to the October financial report.
And we'll bid Mr. Smith adieu.
Oh, yes, thank you. Be careful driving, I say the roads can be icy.
Okay, we'll run through this pretty quickly. This is through October, so... This is through October, so four months of the fiscal year, two months of the school year. Wages full-time and part-time are higher than they've been the last few months. That's because this was one of the months where we had five weekly payrolls and two bi-weekly payrolls. So, that's why those numbers are slightly higher than they were in the month of September, when you had four weeklies and two bi-weeklies. Been reviewing the overtime, they were a little higher, but there were, some of that includes people renting the facilities. So, the overtime cost initially gets charged here, and then we credit it out at the end of the year. Wages per diem, those are the subs. Obviously, that's much higher in October than it was during the summer and even in September. But it's kind of in line where we were last year. And then retirement and separation pay, I updated that. You can see year-to-date, that's $617,000. There's $182,000 left in that account. Of the list of all the people that said they were going to retire in the spring, they're all covered so far except for two teachers. So, there's another $34,000 that will be coming in the next month or two when we make their payments. They just, for some reason, took their time filing their paperwork. So, but that $34,000 will hit, and then that should cover anyone that told us they were going to retire. People can still retire during the year, teachers don't typically do it, but administrative staff or other people can do it. So, I'm hoping that that account should be fine for the year, since the 182 will knock off 34 and we'll still have, you know, over $140,000 to deal with any more retirements. Okay, and then if we sort of fringe benefits and professional technical services, those are all fine. Looking at property services, looking at the utilities, electricity, year-to-date, we're running about $55,000 less than the same point we were last year. That just could be a lump, the way the payments are being lumped, but we'll see it, at least it's off to, last year, we were much higher than we had been the previous year. This year, it's lower at this point. And heating gas and water, heating gases, as you know, most of the costs are going to start hitting from this month forward, so it's a relatively small amount. And water's been pretty steady. I mean, the Penechuk bill is approximately the same every month. So, those are running sort of in line with the budget and where we were last year. Okay, and then when we get down further and we look at the other services, I was looking at the transportation, regular transportation and sped transportation. They're both a, the regular transportation is a month behind. Typically, what happens is when we sign, the way the contract works, we say we pay so much per bus, they take the number of buses times the rate, and they send us an invoice September through June. So, they're basically dividing it by 10. But typically, they're a little late getting us the first one, because we got to make sure we clearly define how many buses we're using. Occasionally, we'll either add a bus or drop a bus at the beginning of the year. So, they're a month behind, but I'm sure they'll probably catch up by the end of next month. And the sped transportation, I did look, those numbers are very low so far, but the September and October invoices have hit in the month of November. So, this will all catch itself up. It looks better than it should right now, but like I said, it's going to catch itself up. Tuition out of district, you know, that's always been the one we keep an eye on, talk about. We do have a $5.7 million budget this year, as opposed to, you know, we were down below five the last couple of years, so we'll be better. The projection at this point, we're having a meeting on Friday to have our second projection, but it looks like it's about $6 million right now. And that number typically increases as the year goes on, doesn't decrease unless we lose as many students as we gain. But I did hear today about another student going out of district, they're just making that decision. So, I'm not expecting that $6 million to go lower, and hopefully, it won't go too much higher. Supplies and materials, pretty straightforward, nothing too much there. The other, the indirect costs, the 68200, you'll see that we're already at $64,000. When Glenys was working on this, she would do the entries on a quarterly basis. We've sort of changed now, since we have two new people in those two roles, where we used to have Paul and Glenys, now we have Derek and Jenny, so we're doing things more on a monthly basis. So, I think you'll see that credited on a more regular basis, just sort of the way we're doing the work slightly differently. And then equipment, you'll notice the computer equipment line for the month was $268,000, which is obviously significant. In the budget for this year, we had those two large items. We had the new core switch at South, and we had the LAN controller. Both of those are in that number. So, those two significant purchases that we increased the budget for in this fiscal year both hit this month, the invoices hit this month. So, that's why that number's so high. And other than that, we're 27% through the spend at this point, which is sort of typical where we'd expect to be. So, that is pretty much it for the financial report. Any questions or?
I think you partially addressed it with the special ed expenses. They're following their normal pattern, where we have a budgeted amount, and it's a race to the end of the year to see if we need more, is sort of how I could, I guess after four years, that's how I would describe it.
Yeah, but we're closer, because we added $800,000 to the budget, we'll be a lot closer this year.
But you scared me when you suggested we might need another 400.
No, I don't think I meant 400, but they'll-
No, 5.7, sorry, 300. You said six.
No, we will need more than that. But last year, we needed a million more. This year, we only need 300,000 to 400,000 more. We do have a special revenue fund, which has that amount in it, which we could cover in case every other account is spent perfectly. So, we're in much better shape this year than we were.
Well, I think also there's going to be money sitting around from some job openings, right? That's going to be unpaid for several months till certain positions get filled, right? That becomes money that sits in the budget that can be reallocated at the end of the year.
True, true.
So, I think you have some, I'm finally understanding what goes on. So, I think there'll be money to be found.
Hopefully, there will be some, yes.
I'm looking for a motion to accept the fiscal year 20 October financial report as presented.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kaufman. Okay, roll call, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is a yes, pass unanimously. Okay, and the last item on the agenda, the transfer report.
Okay, we'll run through this quickly. There's not too many this month. The first one is a transfer within the technology department, taking a little money out of the computer line and putting it into conferences. There was a request made by IT and by the superintendent that the three of the people go to this MasQ conference, it's called. It's held each year, a lot of vendors available, so they made a transfer, moved some of the money from equipment to conferences to cover the conference. The next one is, there was a position for an SLP where the person left early this year. We haven't been able to replace that person. We're probably not going to be able to replace that person. This happens a lot with specialists that are hard to find.
Is that sign language?
Speech-language pathologist.
Speech, thank you.
So, the person, we did make the hire, they only lasted a few, I don't know, six weeks or so, and it just, I'm not 100% sure what happened, but the person's no longer with us. So, we're, to meet the needs of the students with the IEPs, we require, we have an outside person, so a contracted service. So, we're simply moving the funds from a labor account to a contract services.
Okay.
Now, the negative part of that, of the contract services, costs more than the internal person, but it's what we have to do for now.
But in the long run, is it cheaper because of the benefits?
It depends on how much the person gets paid, but I would still, I think it's still cheaper to have an internal person than it is to pay the contracted rates.
Thank you.
Next one is district office. As you're probably aware, there's a new website coming to town, probably January, I think, is the plan. I think they're still working there. So, this was moving from hardware to, because they wanted this training, so they brought the person in. I think they were there last week, a number of different people went to that training, so that we'll be in better shape moving forward with the website, it's new debut. And then the last one, there's actually two of them, but it's really just one entry. Basically, this is cleaning up the budget. When we put new positions in the budget, for example, we're going to, let's say we put an ELL teacher in, we put it into this code, this 9999 code. So, it's in the labor account, but it's in 999. And then when we find out where we hire the person, so this is just putting the people in the right spot. So, these numbers are in the budget, it's just cleaning up the budget and putting them in the correct spot. So, it's a lot of money, but these are all positions that have been approved in the budget. They were just put into the 999 till we knew where they were going to be hired. So, now they're in their right schools.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
That's a question. So, when it says all staff now hired, does that mean the district has no openings?
No, just the new hires. So, in the budget, if we had-
Oh, the incremental positions, the ELLs?
Yeah, let's say 15 new hires. They're all hired, they're all in the schools, this is to clean up the budget. That, yeah, there could be still openings in the district, there probably are some.
Okay.
Especially parents.
I can think of two directors, so.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the October transfer report as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Kaufman. Okay, roll call, Mr. Kaufman? Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Oden is yes, motion passed unanimously. Looking for a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mosher? I'll second it. All in favor? No, I'm sorry, roll call, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oden is yes, pass unanimously. It is 7:46.